I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Commissioner meeting of January 10, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. at the Sussex County Administrative Center, Commissioner Meeting Room 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Can I have a roll call, please? Deputy Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden? Is absent. Director Space?
Here. The Board accepted Assemblywoman Dawn Fantasia's resignation from the Commissioner Board on January 9, 2024, at 11:59 a.m. Can we have a moment of silence and a salute to the flag?
The moment of silence today is for retired Police Chief Brett Alamy of the Hardeston Police Department, who passed away unexpectedly last week. We send our condolences to his family.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice, as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on January 7, 2024, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald/Star Ledger, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. Approval of agenda. We have an amendment to tonight's agenda. Item 13G is being tabled at this time. We are also adding an item to executive session under Section 7, Contract Negotiations, Parking Space Agreement. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Carney and Commissioner DeGroot. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nays? Approve. Proclamations, certificates, presentations? We have none. Public hearing? No public hearing. Public session from the floor? This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment?
Still moved.
Commissioner Director, Deputy Director Carney makes the motion. And Commissioner DeGroot seconds it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The floor is open. Anyone who wants to make a comment on agenda items only. Okay? Being that there are none, I need a motion to close it.
Still moved.
Okay?
Second.
Okay. Carney and DeGroot. Okay. Commissioner comments? We will start with our newest Commissioner. All in favor? Oops. All in favor? Sorry. I'm jumping the gun.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Commissioner comments? We'll start with our newest Commissioner, Commissioner DeGroot.
Great. So first and foremost, I want to express my gratitude and a big thank you to the dedicated county workers within the Division of Public Works, Roads, Facilities, Officers of Bridge and Traffic, and everyone who plowed our county roads and parking lots. Myself and the community appreciate you ensuring the safety of Sussex County. I actually received a call from Green Township from a colleague commending their quick and efficient work, and a text message from a friend up in mind using the words, "The roads were really well taken care of." So, thank you. And I also want to thank our very young county administrator, Ron Tappin, for consistently communicating with myself and, I'd imagine, the other fellow commissioners with everything going on yesterday. I appreciate you, Ron, keeping this up to date with the latest developments on the state of emergency we were in. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Secondly, I had the opportunity to attend the reorganization meeting in Stanhope yesterday. We persevered through the snow and rain, and it was truly a pleasure to witness the collaborative discussions led by Stanhope's Councilman Mayor. Great things are really going on down the gateway to Sussex County. Stanhope received funding for this past spring with the help of Congressman Kane to build a water tower that will significantly enhance the municipal water supply and better safeguard the residents. The proposed 300,000-gallon water tower will significantly improve the infrastructure for the borough of Stanhope. So, a lot of amazing things happening in Stanhope. Really happy for them, and it's going to be a good 2024 down there. Furthermore, the Sussex County Division of Health is offering COVID-19 vaccinations with spite vax by Moderna. 12 years and older only COVID-19 vaccinations will be available on a walk-in basis in conjunction with flu vaccines on the following dates and times at the location of the Office of Public Health and Nursing, 201 Wheatworth Road, Hamburg, New Jersey, on Wednesday, January 24, 2024, from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. Regards in the COVID-19 virus, from December 1st to 30th, 2023, Sussex County has reported an average of 18 to 19 daily cases. So, everyone stay clean, wash your hands. For influenza, the most recent New Jersey Department of Health Influenza Activity Level Report, as of the week of ending December 30, 2023, indicates that the influenza activity level is high statewide. So, family, friends, and yourself, keep clean. Lastly, I had the privilege of being flown out to Iowa over the weekend to engage with young elected officials from across the country. Thirty-two states were represented, which consisted of state representatives, county commissioners, as well as individuals serving on town councils and mayors. It was an honor to represent Sussex County and proudly highlight to the rest of the country the great presence of agriculture we have in our northwest region, in addition to being home of Lake Hopacong, largest freshwater lake in the state. During my time there, though, I had a really noteworthy conversation take place with a county commissioner from Tennessee. To my surprise, the county commissioner from Tennessee revealed the absence of a county program for farmland preservation. I took the opportunity to emphasize that our county's farmland preservation program is not only vital, but also an integral service our county government offers. It provides farmers the opportunity to sell their development easements. Hence, they still own their land, but they sell the rights to develop it for anything other than agriculture. This action or service really provides farmers an additional avenue for compensation while heavily contributing to the preservation of our county's unique rural heritage. Yeah, it was really a great conversation, and in summary, it was a great event and weekend. I'm grateful for the experience and happy to bring back the lessons I learned to contribute to the veterans of Sussex County and to share with the Board. So, that is all. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes, thank you. And I had Bible study this morning with Jack, and he told me about me going to Iowa and whatnot. It's always good to meet other people and bring some stuff back to New Jersey, especially Sussex County, and kind of benefit off of their knowledge and what they've done, what works. Sussex County Division of Public Works, winter storm operations. DPW crews had a full activation response on January 6 at 1:00 p.m. The response included 72 staff members and plow trucks. Approximately 2,560 tons of salt was used during the event. The winter storm left the county with eight to 15 inches, depending on where you were, obviously. Highest totals were in the northern side of the county. DPW crews are now preparing for upcoming rainstorm that we're going to get, what is expected to two or three inches of rain. The anticipated rain results in heightened concern of flooding. The crews will be working to ensure the storm elevations are clear of snow to, are clear of snow to, and they can accept the runoff. That's spelled, little written wrong. So, kudos to them, as always. They always do a good job, as Jack said prior, keeping up with the snow. This year, we have enough plow trucks that we're not putting it out to contractors, subcontractors, which is nice, it's in-house. We have a bunch of CDL licenses that we just got, taking care of this previous month, which is nice. Give them the opportunity to keep it in-house, which is always nice, and saves the county money. Sussex County Division of Planning and Economic Development, fiscal year 2021, Trails Grant Program, obviously just goes back three years, but this has been the start of it. The Division of Planning and Economic Development is responsible for administering the annual Trail Grant Program. The Trails Program operates on a reimbursement basis only, which must be validated by Division of Planning in coordination with the county CFO. Division recently closed out three of the eight Trail Grant applications from '21. Review of financial records, copies of invoices, payroll, et cetera, approve reimbursement requests and coordinated grants, close out with each municipality, and municipalities receiving reimbursement, Frankfurt, Wantage, and Barrow. We continue to review and process Lafayette Township reimbursement requests, Mr. Henderson. So, work summary of Division of Engineering. Allway stops were installed at the intersection of County Route 613 and 671 in West Shore Trail, with in-house with enhanced warning signage and pavement markings. Curves and turns were enhanced with Chevron signage and advanced curve and turn warning signage. Crosswalks and trail crossings were installed and/or enhanced with signage of pavement markings. Three hundred and sixty sign faces created by the Office of Bridge and Safety. Bridge and Traffic Safety have fabricated. That's an in-house source that we use, and we also help out other municipalities, saving the county in a whole, as a shared service, a lot of money. Five hundred and fifty-three work orders issued by Engineering instructing of the work required and data collection needed, which were then completed by the Office of Bridge and Safety, signed fabrication, and traffic safety crews. I had the opportunity to head down Tuesday, yesterday, to the 221st General Assembly swearing in for Dawn Fantasia, Mike and Ganemore. It was the first time I'd been down to Trenton. It was very nice with how they put it together. A little long for me, probably about two hours longer than I would like it to be, but Dawn and Mike have put the effort to running for State Assembly, filling the shoes of Parker Space and How It Wears, which I appreciate both of them for serving as long as they did, and second that Dawn and Mike are filling their shoes in this process. Also, congratulations to Parker Space, because he also got sworn in in a different part of Trenton and the State House. So, congratulations to him, and thank you for what he has done and what he is going to do as Senator. Jill and I, rather, we went down to DPW Garage's last week, or Garage, I say singular, in Stillwater. We met with about seven or eight, I believe, DPW employees, just to hear what's going on. I like to hear from the horse's mouth. That kind of gives us an idea of what's happening in the county and all the agencies that we go and visit. And there was a couple of things they were concerned about, which, at the end of the day, Jill and I had them taken care of. One of those I will bring up is continued education. So, in the county here, it always seems like the higher echelon of people get to continue their education. And that happens with teachers, it happens with administrators, police officers, and so on and so forth. And sometimes, it's not always, the DPW or lower echelon, if you will, don't get the same opportunities. So, with that being said, Jill and I met with Planning and Engineering, and that is going to take place. They already started, which was nice, but the commissioners will give it for their blessing, I'm sure, and they're going to get the opportunity, basically, to learn different machines, learn how to drive a truck, learn some management skills, and so on and so forth. That way, when the opportunity arises, that they can get a promotion, make a little bit more money, it's there. So, again, we're all about fair, being fair throughout the county, not just the higher ups, because that's not fair, and we don't accept that. And again, back to just the DPW in its own, just kudos to them for keeping our road safe and clear, as they always do. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay. Now for mine. So, we were sworn in last Monday, and we all hit the ground running. And Tuesday morning, bright and early, I had a meeting with Jack DeGroot to discuss multiple different things. And then, on that same day, I met with Chris Carney and our administration, and we then went on, and we had an American Rescue Plan Act meeting and a facilities meeting. We've just been, lots of meetings, and then I went and I toured the vacant Huey-Dwyer Correctional Facility. And like I said, at Reorg, I would definitely like to see that off of our properties. So, hopefully, that can happen this year, but it's going to take some time. And then, like Chris said, we met with the DPW Garage in Stillwater. We plan to meet with all of the garages in the near future. What he failed to say was the meeting was at 7:00 a.m. So, we're bright and early for these meetings, and we have one with Lafayette Garage on Friday now at 7:00 a.m. It was nice to hear their concerns, and hopefully, the more that we meet, and we can just find these small things to make it a better workplace for them. Let's see. I attended many reorganizational meetings this week. One of them was in Sussex Borough, where they swore in their first female chief ever, Kathy Southard. I attended the Sussex Wantage School Board reorganization, Wantage Township reorganization, Hopacong Borough swearing-in ceremony. I had the opportunity on Monday to attend the last session of the 220th Legislature in Trenton, along with my husband, while I was still an Assemblyman. It's so different how they do things in Trenton, and their day started, I want to say about 11 o'clock, and it was 9:45 by the time their meeting was over. So, that was a really long day. And then, yesterday, I attended the swearing-in of the New Jersey State Senate in the State House, where my husband became the Senator for the 24th Legislative District. I would also like to congratulate our county council, Doug Steinhardt, for being sworn in for the second time as State Senator for the 23rd District. I'm sure both of them will continue the good fight for the northwest corner of New Jersey. And I would like to congratulate our former colleague, Dawn Fantasia, Mike and Ganemore, who were sworn in yesterday as our new representatives in the 24th District for the Assembly. And I only got to see them for literally not even one minute in passing, which is sad that it's at the exact same time in different locations. And they plan on, the three of them, Senator Space, Assemblywoman Fantasia, and Assemblymen Ganemore, will be keeping the same legislative office and the same staff in Sparta on Demarest Road. And I would like to congratulate Senator Oraho and Assemblyman Worth on their retirement and a job well done advocating for our county and our residents. And that's all I have. Oh, no, I have my, I forgot my health department. Division of Senior Services. A Matter of Balance class is available at Liberty Towers, 32 Liberty Street, Newton, on Thursdays, beginning January 4 and ending February 29, 2024, from 9:30 to 11:30 a.m. A Matter of Balance is a program designed to reduce the fear of falling and increase activity levels among older adults. Participants learn to set realistic goals to increase activity, change their environment to reduce fall risks, and learn simple exercises to increase strength and balance. To register or obtain additional information, please contact the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555. Division of Health, Office of Public Health Nursing. A Child Health Clinic will be held on Tuesday, January 23, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Office of Public Health Nursing, 201 Wheatworth Road, Hamburg. This clinic offers physical exams, screenings, and age-appropriate immunizations for children ages zero to five years old that are without health insurance. To schedule an appointment, call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1275. A Health Check Clinic will be held on Tuesday, January 23, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Office of Public Health Nursing, 201 Wheatworth Road, Hamburg. This clinic offers vaccines for adults and school-aged children. There is no fee for screenings if uninsured or underinsured. The clinic also offers a variety of health screenings. To schedule an appointment, call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1275. A Women's Health Screening Clinic will be held on Thursday, January 25, from 4:30 to 7:30 at the Office of Public Health Nursing, 201 Wheatworth Road, Hamburg. The clinic offers a variety of health screenings and education. This service is free to uninsured and underinsured county residents who qualify for the New Jersey Cancer Education and Early Detection, NJSEED program. To schedule an appointment, call the Office of Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570, extension 1246. Thank you. Number nine, approval of consent agenda. There is none. Number 10, approval of minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the December 27, 2023 meeting? Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Okay.
Just the only, sorry, Director. The only reason I stopped to hesitate is because, for some reason, and I don't know what everybody has in the audience here, but I have.
No, yours is correct. It says. Is mine different?
It's missing a number, so everything's a number of the number.
Okay, so I'm off with the numbers?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all. Just so everybody could follow.
Their agendas are correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, mine is just different. Okay, so we have a motion from Deputy Director Carney, and I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Ordinances? We have none. Appointments and/or resignations. A, reapointment of Joan Shaw to the Sussex County Senior Services Advisory Council for a term of three years effective immediately and expires on December 31, 2026. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
A second? Okay. Commissioner Director, Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner DeGroot. Do I need a roll call? Roll call? Roll call. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Director Space? Yes. B, appointments of Anthony Greigle, Emily Fisher, and Fausto Maiano to the Sussex County Senior Services Advisory Council for terms of three years effective immediately and expire on December 31, 2026. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Deputy Director Carney, motion?
Second.
Second. Commissioner DeGroot. Can I get a roll call, please? Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Director Space? Yes. Resolution C, appointment of Lisa Lombardo as a member of the Sussex County Local Advisory Committee on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse for three years, said term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2023. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner DeGroot. A roll call, please?
Discussion? Discussion?
Any discussion? No. Okay. Roll call, please. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Director Space? Yes. Resolution D, appointments of Maureen Siancy and Joan Brugio as members of the Sussex County Community Transportation Citizens Advisory Committee for three years, said term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2026. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Deputy? Okay. Carney and DeGroot. Any discussion? Seeing that there's none, can I get a roll call, please? Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Director Space? Yes. Resolution E, reapointment of Michelle Metzger as Secretary to the Sussex County Uniform Construction Code Board of Appeals for 2024. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Carney?
Second.
DeGroot? Any discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call, please? Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Director Space? Yes. Resolution F, reapointment of Lisa Chamings to the Sussex County Open Space Advisory Committee for terms of three years, to be effective immediately and expire on December 31, 2026. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Carney?
Second.
DeGroot? Any discussion? No? Can I get a roll call, please? Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Director Space? Yes. Resolution G, reapointment of Marie Springer, Ph.D., M.P.A., to the Sussex County Open Space Advisory Committee for terms of three, three years, to be effective immediately and expire on December 31, 2026. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Is this G?
Yes.
But that's only the help.
No, that's 13.
Oh, 13. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Carney and DeGroot. Any discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call, please? Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Director Space? Yes. Resolution H, reapointment of Peter Southway as a farm representative to the Sussex County Agricultural Development Board for a three-year term effective immediately and expires on December 31, 2026. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Carney?
Second.
And DeGroot? Any discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call, please? Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden is absent. Director Space? Yes. Resolution I, reapointment of Lori Space Day as a general public representative to the Sussex County Agricultural Development Board for a three-year term effective immediately and expire on December 31, 2026. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Carney?
Second.
DeGroot? Any discussion? No? Can I get a roll call, please? Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Director Space? Abstain. Resolution J, appointment of Carl Palladino as a citizen member to the Sussex County Planning Board for a three-year term effective immediately and expire on December 31, 2026. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Carney?
Second.
DeGroot? Any discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call, please? Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Director Space? Yes. Resolution K, reapointment of Alex Mayuski as a citizen member to the Sussex County Planning Board for a term of three, three years, effective immediately and expire on December 31, 2026. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Carney?
Second.
Commissioner DeGroot, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call, please? Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Director Space? Yes. Resolution L, designating Linda Miller as Clerk pro 10 through December 31, 2024. Can I get a motion, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Carney and DeGroot. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
This doesn't really pertain to this particular resolution. I just want to know, how are these people going to know? Are we going to let them know?
Yes.
When the time comes.
On each of the resolutions, it has their contact information, plus the appropriate board is notified.
Okay. All right. And a lot of these have been obviously established. They've been on these boards for a long time.
Some are new appointments, so they'll be advised.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Uh, Carney and DeGroot, we just.
Oh, we already had that. Okay, and we have discussion. Okay, roll call, please.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Director Space?
Yes. Okay, resolution.
I just want to make one correction as we're going to resolutions, because there was a numbering. When we had the agenda amended at the beginning of the meeting, we said 13G. It's actually 14G that we are tabled.
That's why I had.
Okay, that's why you did. Okay, because my numbers are different.
I'm looking at the directors and I see what you get.
I just want to correct for the record, 14G is what is tabled.
Okay, so 14G is tabled. So can I get a motion for resolution 14A through 14F?
That's it. Still moved.
Second.
A second? Okay, Deputy Commissioner Carney and Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion?
For the benefit of the public, Ron, if you could just let it, let everybody know why we're not doing G tonight?
Oh, yes.
And even for Commissioner DeGroot, I don't know if he knows or not. I know we spoke about it previously, but.
Yeah, there is a, there is a process in which we're spending ARPA money. And we have a committee that that authorizes us to select projects. And those projects are put on a resolution. And that resolution comes to the board for the initial approval of the projects. And then, as each project is pulled and is ready to go, whether it's construction or buy a truck or whatever it's for, we write another resolution appropriating those funds that was originally appropriated. G got out of the gate a little quick. We were going to, we were asking to use ARPA funds for that project, but the resolution to approve those projects hasn't been onto the board's ability to vote on yet. So that's why it's being tabled.
That sounds like something Commissioner Carney might have done, too.
Yeah, I'm not blaming anybody. It just, we get it right. It's all that matters. We get it right.
All right. Thank you for that.
Okay, can I get a roll call, please?
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Director Space?
Yes. Number 15, Awards of Contract Change Bid Orders. Resolution A, B, and C. Should I read those? Or no? Okay.
There's a paragraph on the next page regarding that.
The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change bid orders consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through C?
I made the motion.
Okay. Commissioner DeGroot, Deputy Director Carney. Any discussion? Seeing that there's none, can I get a roll call, please?
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Director Space?
Yes. Item 16, Financial. A. Resolution Payment of Bills List A, January 10th, 2024. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call, please?
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Director Space?
Yes. B. Resolution Payment of Bills List B, January 10th, 2024. Can I get a motion to pay Bills List B?
I made the motion.
Yeah. Okay, Commissioner DeGroot, in a second?
A second.
Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call, please?
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Director Space?
17, Personnel. Resolution Personnel Agenda of January 10th, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden is absent. Director Space?
Yes. Administrative report.
Thank you. To start off with, we, all of us know that we belong to statewide insurance fund. And this past week, we, every year, we apply for a grant. And that grant measures us on performances that we do in this world of safety. And that comes to how many number of toolbox inspections we do, how many trainings we do, how many buildings do we inspect, how many work zones do we inspect, how many repairs are made and successfully completed when we do the inspections. It's a calculation of those percentages. And if you do all those things that you said you were going to do in the grant, you get some money back at the end of the year. So we deposited $26,000 last week in the, in that grant that we received. And we've applied for next year's grant as well. The reason I bring that up as well, our guys do and gals do a great job, particularly in emergency situations like snow, our facility people, our DPWs and everything else. The reason I bring up safety and toolbox inspections and toolbox talks, 18 months ago, we were 19 people light in our DPW operation. We were at wits' ends of getting contractors and, and, and being prepared to do what we need to do for the safety of the roads and the constituents of our county. Last night, we had 72 people that were on the road. 14 of those were brand new. They'd never, had never snowplowed for the, for the county at all. Nine of those had never seen a snowstorm in a truck at all. So it's a pretty large percentage of people that we have on the road. And the reason I say this, we do a good job of training, we do a good job of that. We had zero incidents on the road last night. And this was not an easy storm. There was times that we were getting one to three inches of snow an hour at night. That's not the best of conditions when you've got a brand new driver in a truck. And they're all big. And we had absolutely zero incidents or accidents or anybody getting stuck. Also, we had 100% fleet maintenance onboard. We had five trucks that went down. They immediately went into the truck that last night. So if we've had immediate turnaround on the trucks as well. So kudos to all of them. And it's just a good evidence of things that we do right. So I'm very proud of all of them. That being said, the county has purchased a, an alert system. It's called Alert Media. Please go on the website, tell everybody to go up on the website and sign up for that. Anything that we do from a county operation, if we're going to close the building, delay the building, or we're going to do something from a road closure or something like that, we're going to put that on that alert system. So please sign up for that. And that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you. Do we have a county council report?
Real fast. A meeting tomorrow on the ongoing disposition of the jail. Having some additional conversations just with the administrator regarding some other municipal contract interactions, but really that's it. Nothing else.
Counsel, just update with appraisal for the jail? That's.
Our walk-through's tomorrow.
That's 11, right?
I want to say like.
11, right? Yep, just so everybody.
Correct, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Sounds good. Anxiously waiting that one. Do we have any unfinished business?
Yeah, just real quick, this is something that we spoke about a while ago. Basically, our old board or past board minus Commissioner Fantasia and Yardley doing a proclamation for Senator Ouroho and Assemblyman Wirths.
Yep.
Maybe if the commissioner agreed, we can do something at our next meeting.
Sounds good to me.
Your proclamation for them?
I don't know if you want to reach out or.
Do you know anybody in that?
Yeah, I can, I can reach out. But you're the liaison, so I didn't want to step on your toes.
No, if you want to take care of that, that's good. Now we can do something for them.
I will take care of that.
I just, you know what it is? It's the senior, the better.
Yes.
I don't want them ever to think that they've forgotten after the years that they've spent.
Sounds good.
Serving, in general.
I will reach out tomorrow, first thing.
Perfect, thank you.
Do we have any new business?
I do. And I could have brought it up at Commissioner's comments, but I didn't. So I'm just going to call it new business. And Ron actually went and called Keith Nelson, along with Facilities, that does a great job. So I want to brag about him a little bit because every time I try to get mad at Keith, he comes back with something good. He's just, the guy is, is, he's just great. He's phenomenal. He manned Facilities, all Facilities, what they do. And it's, it's good to give the update. So I'm going to do that. HVA installs Sheriff's Building at High Street, Grand Jury Building, Office of OEM, and the Vernon Library. Hopacong DPW, the total replacement of the septic, which is good. Can't read your.
Ongoing projects are.
Okay, car, car in place. Yeah, okay. In-house carpentry, electric plumbing and whatnot at eight garages. So we gave our garages, again, trying to take care of everybody in the county, not just the people that are in this office or the Cochran Building. You know, we allotted some money for the DPW garages to update their garages, do a little kitchenette however they wanted to see, but basically, kind of make it a little bit more feasible. When they do the, the snowstorms and whatnot, and they're out for 24 hours, they could actually have a nice place to relax, get something to eat, and so on and so forth. So there, we started on that. Stillwater Garage, which Jill and I just visited last week, that'll be the first one to start, and so on and so forth. Franklin Library, the architectural engineering for the new facade and the roof replacement, that started progressing as well. And that should happen.
This year?
Yeah, this year for sure, within, you know, three to six months, which will give that whole new, that library a whole new look, which is nice. That's all I have for.
Thank you. Public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? Being none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstain. Motion passed. Please line up, and if anyone wants to say anything for the good of the county. Well, that's an easy one for my first meeting. Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business?
Still moved.
Second.
Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner DeGroot, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstain. Motion carries. Reminders, please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. Executive session, Christina?
Yep. Closed session, resolution referring providing for an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12 and SEC, whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12B as designated below. Number one, matters required by law to be confidential, county council legal. Number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege, farmland preservation revision, and parking, parking space agreement. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners, or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and be it further resolved that upon completion of the business for which the Board has entered into the executive session, the Board shall reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public, and be it further resolved that the Board may take formal action after returning from executive session and adjourn the regular meeting. Motion to adopt, oh, that's your part.
You were doing so good at it. Can I get a motion to adopt executive session resolution and enter an executive session?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstain. Motion carries. Can I get a motion to adjourn from an executive session and return to regular business?
Still moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Deputy Director Carney and Commissioner DeGroot. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Abstain. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
So moved. Oh, okay, that's right. Sorry, I skipped it. Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?